Good evening and welcome to the Governor's Room at the St. Peter Community Center for the first.
You do need to get one.
Yeah, I do. Good evening, welcome to the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, 6:31 PM. We will call the meeting of the St. Peter School Board to order. If you are here and interested in speaking, please get your name on a card and get it to Sarah. And we'll take those later on in the agenda. First of all, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to consider and adopt the agenda that is before you in the board book or paper copy.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Sarah, any requests to speak? Thank you. Next up, approval of consent agenda items, again in a board book packet and in sizable paper packet.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just in general, without pointing any particular people out, I just see, you know, many teachers that are resigning and just wish them all luck. I mean, some of them that have been there for quite a while and I'm not going to say all the specific names because I'll forget somebody, but I see a lot of people that have been there for a long time, so I wish them all luck on their future endeavors.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just want to call out two graduates that didn't walk across the stage and hear their name. One is Ben Kennedy, who wrapped up his credits for graduation during summer school, so congratulations to him for sticking with that and finishing strong. And the second one is Javier Martinez, who was a former student at St. Peter Public Schools and stopped attending and then came back and finished seven credits through adult basic education. So really worked hard to do that, so thanks to Tammy and her team for supporting him as well, but congratulations, that is a lot of work.
Yeah, good job Ben and Javier.
Absolutely.
And then I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Megan Gracea, who has accepted the position of business manager and started with us last week. Wave, Megan. Megan comes to us from M-Ved, where she was business manager for seven years, if I get that right, and had a finance background before that, and in the very beginning had experience as a first grade teacher. So welcome, Megan, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Welcome, Megan. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting or approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Time for our student spotlight. Leah.
Not gonna lie, I'm a little anxious.
We're nice.
They're an easy crowd, Leah.
You are so.
We're just anxious to hear from you.
Yeah.
So I brought Leah Zarn with me today from Rock Bend, and she is a rising senior. And I first met Leah last year in summer school when she was attending, and she wasn't sure what her plans were for this upcoming year. And she was admittedly behind in credits, and so when we got to talking about what might be a good fit, I recruited her hard to Rock Bend, and she has been a really wonderful fit. So Leah, why don't you start by telling us who is with you today in the crowd?
My dad, Scott, my mom, Jen, and then my really, really good friend, Erica.
Yes, so a good support team behind Leah. So I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions, and I wrote them down, so if you're anxious, you can look.
It's okay.
So what are some things that you like about school? What are your favorite classes and subjects?
Well, I'm surprised by this. I used to hate math with a passion. When I tell you I would fight not to do math, but my teacher, Ms. Niemeyer, she has made it so easy. She's understanding. She actually goes forth and explains the steps to me, and I just began to love it.
Oh. All right, so how would you describe Rock Bend? Because not a lot of people know a lot about our school, so.
It's very nice because it's pretty lenient towards making credits versus like, well, with online or like in class and stuff, you can do extra credit assignments and stuff like that, and I really appreciate that. And it's a no homework school, so you don't have to take homework home, which is also a plus, so I'm not staying up till 3:00 AM doing homework, so.
Well, and that's because Leah has had really good attendance, too.
That, too, yes.
Yes. So are you doing anything fun this summer?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna go up to DL to visit my bio family because I'm adopted. Shout out to my mom and dad for that. Very lovely home, and I appreciate it a lot. Um, so I'm gonna go visit my birth mom and my sisters and my stepdad, and we're gonna go fishing and just have a blast at the lake.
Awesome. So what are your goals for your senior year?
Just to graduate on time, honestly. That's, that's, that's just the number one thing. I have to graduate on time. I've come this far. I'm not gonna go right back down to where I used to be. I just want to stay on track.
Are you willing to brag a little and talk about the work you put in this year to do that?
Sure. How many credits? I think it was 13, right? I started with 13 credits when I attended Rock Bend because I had some depression episodes in ninth grade, and now I'm at 20, so I'm like caught up and I'm very proud of myself. I never thought I'd be here, so yeah, thank you for that.
She's doing awesome. And then what do you want to do after high school?
I'm considering college. I do want to take one year really to just pick out a college. As of right now, I'm thinking South Central because it's a little bit cheaper than MSU, and it has the right programs that I would like and need to succeed, so.
And Leah did really well in the work skills competition at South Central College this year, so if you decide to take that year off, I think that they said you were very employable.
Yeah, almost every one of them said they'd hire me, which.
Yes.
That kind of shocked me, but you know.
Didn't shock me. So are you willing to answer some of the questions if they have some questions?
Yeah, go for it.
So you asked, you said something about having the classes that you'd like to. What are you gonna do? What are you, what's your dream?
I want to be a vet technician. I would love to be a marine biologist, but it's just not realistic. I would not be able to be away from family all the time, so if I'm a vet tech, I could work in Mankato or like somewhere closer, like maybe even Minneapolis, somewhere like that, so.
Excellent.
I feel like that's just a lot more doable.
Yeah, good idea.
I have a couple of things to share with you. Number one, I appreciate you being so open and honest about you talking about with your depression because I'm with your sister on that, and people won't believe me, but I hear you.
It's been a work in progress.
And that is hard, and for you to overcome it like that, that's amazing, okay? So that's a great story for you to share with others. And the other thing is you say you're in a homework school, but I bet you have to have pretty, I don't know, I'm not just asking this question, but I'm betting if you don't actually show up, then you probably are a homework school, right? I mean, if you have to actually show up, so.
Technically, no, you don't do it at home. So on Wednesdays, we have this, would you call it a program?
We call it power hour.
Yeah, okay. So on Wednesdays, it's a half day, so if you have all your work done, you get the award of going home, but if you don't, you have to stay, and you have until the end of that school day to do work. And if you're actually working and you're trying really hard and you have like maybe, let's say, one or two assignments left, the teachers might make an exception since you were putting forth the effort. Otherwise, you just get an F and it is what it is.
And that Wednesday power hour is a time that Leah also used because she was caught up in classes to do extra work online, which is how she got additional credits. So that Wednesday power hour is kind of like what you need time. So if it's catch-up time, it's catch-up time. If it's getting ahead in credits, it's that, too.
Yeah, it does sound like the reason that like you probably just fill up Mrs. Sikora's cup just because you just are that person that.
You're awesome, for sure. Thank you.
Wasn't so scary, was it?
No.
A little bit, but no.
All right, well, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Lots to be proud of, Leah.
Thank you.
I love the student spotlights. All right, moving on to action items. First thing up is considering the approval of candidates for graduation. I don't know who's speaking tonight.
I guess I am.
Awesome.
There you go.
This is the list of graduates that were recognized during our regular graduation, and we congratulate them, and this is the last official step of accepting them as graduation candidates. I'm not going to read all the names.
Fantastic. Ah, so we have the list in front of us?
I'll make a motion to accept the list that's presented in front of us for graduation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? List is approved. Congratulations to all the 2023 graduates. Feels official now.
Yes.
Quite official. Number two, consider the approval of a student resource officer agreement with the city of St. Peter.
Yes, this is a continuation of our agreement with the city to provide an SRO. Two years ago, we went through quite a process to redefine the role of SROs in our district and redefine our agreement with the city on what the SRO program looks like. I have to say that Officer John Hughes is, I'd say he's the poster child for SRO programs. He works very hard to build relationships with our students. He knows our families well. He works with our staff to really be proactive with students and help them to make really good choices into the future. I think that Chief Groco has also been a great addition to the police department, has a great vision for SROs and for really the community police model, which SRO has been into really well. So we really do support continuing our agreement to provide an SRO for St. Peter schools and are happy to have Officer Hughes continuing. Remember, we did have a two-SRO model, but just with circumstances the way that they were, there were times we had two, times we had one. It seemed to be working with Officer Hughes, and he feels like he can handle the workload alone, so we went ahead and included that with our budget adjustments this year, going to one SRO. And that is the agreement that is before you.
And the agreement is about the division of costs, or the cost incurred by the school to the city to help pay the wages, all that stuff for the officer.
Correct.
Yep.
And there's no substantial changes to the position description?
No, at all. Just going from two to one.
Yep.
Yep. I move that we approve the student resource officer agreement with the city of St. Peter.
I'll say.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Just real quick, like during the summer at all, is there still, if there is any like, I'm thinking more like along the lines of like, what do I say? I would say drinking violations, because that's the only thing I can think of. But like, is there still like those kind of communications with the SRO, or is that just, how does that work in the summertime?
We actually just had a meeting, our police meeting in June. We usually, we typically don't have one in July. We come back together in August. But I think I've talked to Chief Groco three or four times this week.
Okay.
That we definitely stay connected. Yep, and we are aware when.
Things?
Things happen.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Not, we have a motion and a second to approve the student resource officer agreement with the city of St. Peter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion passes and the agreement, student resource officer agreement with the city of St. Peter has been approved. Thank you. Item number three, consider approval of individual contracts. We have 16 of them.
We do. There are 16. There is one more to be completed. That employee is out of the country for about a month, so we will do that when she comes back. I have met with each of these people and worked through the details of their contract, met with Director Locensgard, and presented to the HR committee as well, and they are before you for approval of the two-year contracts.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the 23, or the approval of the individual contracts for the next two years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And these are all approved as a lump of all 16.
I did, I did want to note that Director Cautin did a great job of working through the contracts and found some typographical and grammatical errors that we'll be fixing that have no changes and have some ideas for future contract language as well.
So we have a motion and a second. Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All 16 individual contracts have been approved. Thank you. Item number four, consider approval of the 2023-2024 budget. Tim and Megan.
Hi. I guess I'll probably take the lead on this since Megan's only been here a week. She's picked up a lot.
Plenty of time.
Yeah. We went over it very thoroughly at the business committee meeting last week, so I'll try and be a lot rifer than we were that night because I think Tim and Tracy were there. But if there's some things that you have questions on, make sure, make sure you let me know. Basically, it should be in the packet, a few pages. I think other years, I kind of went to the cover sheet, which is page two, and maybe we'll start with that and just kind of go over the high points of all the budgets except for Fund One and all the funds besides that, and then we'll spend a little more time on that. So if you want to go to what basically says adopted budget, 23-24, and it's got all the funds listed there, what I'd like to do is to start maybe on the bottom, line 77. Basically, line 74, if you're all there, through 77, is a new fund we added last year. If you remember, we went to the self-insurance, so we needed to separate out both the health and the dental. Basically, last year, we had a decent year. Our revenues were over. And the revenues, remember, we kind of pay ourselves, and the expenses are the claims for the health, and we had about a $400,000 excess of revenues over claims in '22. We projected a couple hundred thousand over in '23, and now this is '24. I guess I want to back up one item. Column C is the projected fund balance at the end of FY '23, which is this year, you know, then that'll happen on June 30th. And so, you know, those are projections, so it's kind of projections on projections, if that makes sense. So we're projecting to end the balance of the year with those balances. And then columns D and E are the revenues and expenses for FY '24. One of the main, you know, we need to approve the budget, but the other main reason it's here in June is in order to spend any money after July 1st, school districts have to approve the budget for the coming year, and every district in the state is doing it in the next week or two, or has already done it. So with that background, you know, we're projecting about a $200,000 excess of revenues over expenses for the health insurance, and we also have self-insured dental, and we've typically had 15,000 to 30,000 of excess revenues in there, and it tries to kind of build up the fund balance for the year you're going to get with health insurance when the claims will exceed the revenue. We've been, you know, I guess when we went into this, they said four to five years. You know, three to four years, you'll be ahead in it one year. And that's why we want to try and build up the fund balance to 800,000 to a million dollars to absorb that in those years. So in '22 was obviously pretty good. '23, unless we have a terrible next 10 days, should be okay. So, you know, Megan will tie out the numbers when we finish. So the trust fund, line 72, is basically just our two scholarship funds, and extended mauer interest comes in, we pay out the scholarships, it basically stays even there. Line 67 is a debt redemption fund, starting the year, projected with about a $670,000 balance. The revenues is basically comes in the tax levy, and then the expenses is the payment on the current bond. Just one thing I'll note, we do not have anything, I don't have anything on here, it's in the audit and all the papers, but to try and lack of confusion, remember in February when we did, you guys did the refunding, you know, we have, we have $48 million invested in savings, and we also have another loan or bonds that we sold. For the next two years, the interest off of the investment will pay the payment on that bond because the bond that was sold in 2015 was not able to be paid off or not callable until, I think it's two more years has to go. So that one will just kind of take care of itself to that time, at which time that money will come out of the savings account, pay off the 2015 bond, which has higher interest rates, and then the bond, the money that was borrowed in February, and then if you go back, remember, we had that one drop in rates when the Ukraine war started, and that's when we got in. So that was, you know, now they're probably 2%, 3% higher, so it's gonna look like a good deal unless something really changes in the course of things. Right now, it's looking like a, like a real good move at that time. So that's not on here. I'm just trying to keep it, confusion, this is the original bond. Basically, levy comes in, payment goes out. Lines 58 through 63 are basically our, the community service fund. Basically, there's three or four different components to that. Line 59, which is more of the community education activities. Line 60, the ECFE programming, and line 61, the school readiness programming. You know, again, this is, this is the fund that's been, you know, the expenses have exceeded the revenues the last couple of years since COVID came about. Before that, it was running okay. School readiness has typically always ran a negative. The negative got bigger. Before that, the community ed portion was positive enough that it covered up some of that, and this one is, you know, it's running a negative. It's the same as it's been the last couple of years we talked about. I think especially 59, the community education one will come in a little bit better than that, but, you know, we tried to be a little bit conservative, so. But that one probably needs to be looked at in the next short while. Line number 55, the food service fund, O2. That's been the shining star, probably. In FY '22, we had free meals for breakfast and lunch. We had a really big fund balance going into FY '23, or this year. We're trying, we actually need to try and spend that down. That 897 is, after spending down, projected a couple hundred thousand. Currently remodeling the kitchen at the middle school and a couple of other things, and that's part of the reason also we switched from Avions back to self-ops to increase probably the quality of the food because we had the funding. We're over the actual amount, or we're at the end of '22 that we could have in there because it's federal funds and they only let you have such a big fund balance, and you have to spend it, and they're limited on that, so it's been, it's been good. I, you know, I expect it probably to drop a little bit in '23 depending upon when the project gets done, remodeling. '24, I know I have a little bit of deficit there. It's really hard to project for, for the coming years because of the change in going to self-ops in '23. And then, but next year, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, it's going back to free meals, as we all know. So we're gonna serve, A, a lot more meals, both breakfasts and lunch, and B, we're gonna get paid for them all. So it should be a good year in '24. Then go up to lines, above line 51, the items are all in the general fund. We do split out lines 45 through 48, basically into what we call Fund O5 for kind of accounting purposes. The state looks at it as Fund O1. There's really two different components in it. Line 46 is the restricted for deferred maintenance, or LTFM. That came out about a few years ago, and we did the roof, and we were negative for a while. You'll see more on this next month. You'll have to approve the 10-year LTF plan every year. This is kind of projection of where it is, and typically it looks like we're spending a little bit more money. You know, I was on the plan from last year, and it'll be updated again in '20, in July, for the coming years. You know, it's a thing where you can spend ahead or save up the balance. If you remember, some of the, that have been on the board for a number of years, the first year it came out, we did the roof at the middle school. We're probably about a, I don't know if we're a million dollars in, you know, negative, but we're close. At the end of '22, we were under 100,000. We had projected to be a little bit higher, but some of the projects got moved back. So in '23, we'll, you know, we'll project the deficit will go up, and then we'll just, you just have to try and work it, you know, with the numbers going forward. We get about 800, 900,000 dollars in revenue. It's about 380 dollars a student, and then just depending on the expenses. The other portion of O5 that we have is basically operating capital, line 47. We have a balance in there of about 400,000 to start the year. That's basically a certain amount of money per kid that we get that has to go for capital, you know, capital items. You know, it used to be books, now it's more online things or, you know, capital physical items, and there's a list of things you can spend that on. Curriculum is one of the big ones there. You know, probably four or five years ago, we did that, the two curriculums in one year, so we try and keep a fund balance for when that cycle comes up. Then if we go up above that, there's a few, within the general fund, we have a lot of assigned funds or restricted funds that are for, you have to spend them for certain things, the state tells us. The assigned funds are money we assigned. The restricted funds are more, the state says this is money for these certain things. Lines 35 through 36 are basically three assigned funds that we have. 35 is a while back, when the new school was built, we set up assigned, the fund of water mitigation. For those of you who've been out to the high school, you see all that work going on on the west side. This is how we're gonna help pay for our portion of it. And I believe Bill, it's enough, it should do our portion. And then, so that's what we had originally set aside for. Assigned the triple A money, that was, that's money that people have donated to the Arts Athletic, and we do various things throughout the year with it. I think that really the school budget can't fund that, are good items. I think we bought a piano last year and the trailer for the trade school so they can store on-site when they build the Habitat House, you know, some, some good items like that. Line 47, excuse me, assigned for funded depreciation is some money we assigned a few years back to knowing that the new school, when the high school was built, we put a lot of stuff in there, you know, whether it's board, you know, boards, computers, monitors, and that stuff really wears out. So we tried to assign some money, so when that starts to wear out, we have a savings account to pay for it because we really didn't have, you know, there's no other place really to get it from. So I think we started this year, we had a couple monitors, we started to replace, but that's what that one's basically for. If you go up to lines 30 and 31, 30 is assigned for severance. Basically, that's there in case, you have a lot of people retire that have vacation or other severance-type things built into their contracts, and that would help pay for that. That honestly started at the same amount when I started here, and we've always just tried to fund that if we've had those through the general fund. So that one can go up or down, but we've chose to kind of keep it the same. Line 31 is assigned for the Viva Trust. That has to do with the teacher's retirement plan that switched about 12, 13 years ago, instead of having a lump sum when they retire, and for those who've been around. Instead of having an lump sum when they retire, and for those who've been around on the levy, now it's, I think it's twelve hundred dollars a year for the first ten years and then they get, the teachers that stay the ten years, they get a payment into the, a Viva account for their retirement and then they get a thousand dollars, I think, a year after that. If they leave before the ten years, some of that is forfeited, or that's forfeited back into the fund. So the fund goes up or down depending upon. Eventually, when all the teachers before, that were hired before two thousand and eight or nine, I think it is, when they're all retired, this will be, you know, it'll be, if you have a hundred teachers with more than that, at twelve hundred dollars, it'll be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year going in. So it's kind of, it's a trade off with the levy and the OPEB and those items. Lines twenty four through twenty seven are basically the student activity accounts. We have one at each school. The, it's basically student raised money spent for student events or student activities. So the students raise it, the students spend it themselves. Couple of years ago, before a couple of years ago, it had, it was in the general fund, unassigned funds and a lot of schools kind of use that money and they weren't, it's really, it's really the students' money. So now we separate, we have to separate it out. And, and we've always kind of kept it separate, we're on that. But basically, hopefully, they, they spend the same amount that they raise. The next ones up there are, are more restricted accounts, the lines fourteen through twenty two. They're, you know, scholarships, we have some other scholarship funds besides the ones in Fund seven that don't have a specific agreement on, but they, they go for that and we, we need to separate that out. Some bigger ones, medical assistance, that's some, that's money that's raised through billing Medicare, Medicaid, I think. And it only can be spent on certain things. Back in twenty two, we didn't have enough certain things that we spent them on, so we, we can carry that over until we do. Non-spendables are just prepaid items, accounting things. Line twelve, the concession fund, the concession fund is part of Fund oh one, we separated it out. We have had a negative, you know, with COVID and some of those things. And there's a couple of things that we need to probably look at or you'll need to look at in the coming years to, to, to just tweak that a little bit. And that takes us up basically to the, the biggest one, line ten, which is the general unassigned fund, which is the one we, we talk about considerably. That's the money in oh one, you can spend on any item, you know, basically it's, it's unassigned, so you can go where it is. Along with that, over the years, we've always done a rollout kind of, and that's the next four pages. And basically, that is FY twenty three is, back in April, we passed the revised budget for twenty three. That was what we passed. That's the starting point for twenty four. And what we kind of do in twenty four then is make, we bring over the fund balance and the projected revenues and expenses and we put in what the major changes are. I'll highlight a couple of the major changes, I won't go through any, all the items, but if you have questions, let me know. If you go to the, the second page FY twenty four, line four fifty five is our estimated fund balance starting the year. Four fifty six is our estimated revenues from twenty three, the year we're gonna close. And the other item that's a, a broad over number is four eighty one, which is our estimated expenditures. You know, if you look at lines four fifty eight and four eighty one, the expenses are more than revenues and we, you know, we've talked about that with the cuts and everything for, for twenty three. A few good things happened for the school's budget from the state. Basically, the two, the two biggest items were the formula increase of four percent, which gives us an additional about six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And then the increase in special ed funds, and this is a combination of a different thing down on line four sixty three. We've talked at length kind of about the special ed cross subsidy, but they increased that from, I think it was six point four three or something, up to forty four percent. We were running close to a couple million dollars in cross subsidy amount, so we're gonna get an extra nine hundred to a hundred to a million dollars in that. Plus, our special ed's expenses have went up over the years and that kind of, it takes you a year kind of to catch up on that. So we're gonna get a, an addition, a lot of additional funding from, from those two items. The third item that was really big for us as far as additional revenue was the change in the compensatory revenue, which has to go back with the free meals. We had the free meals in twenty two, this year we didn't, so we had a lot more people filled out the forms. Plus, they changed the way we can get the information from the county and the people that qualify for there. So in a nutshell, we're going from about seven hundred thousand in compensatory in FY twenty three to about one point six million or nine hundred thousand dollar increase in FY twenty four. So those were the big additions to revenue. They are pretty much hopefully constant things, that, you know, the formula has been there. The cross subsidy will stay at that percent for, I think, two or three years and then it goes up to fifty. If I've got that wrong and somebody else. And then the compensatory, that one, they were, they were worried about that dropping back down again with the free, but they've kept. For twenty five, they're gonna keep it at the same percentage and then they're gonna try and change the formula of how that's calculated. So at least that's my understanding of it, so you won't, you know, we dropped down five, six hundred thousand dollars from twenty one to twenty three because of that and we're, now we're back above. The big takeaways from revenue is we had a lot of COVID funds in twenty three. That will not be there, we have a little bit left, some summer school stuff that was a specific funding that we didn't have the expenses for before. Is really the big, the big takeaway. And the expenditures, they're, they're actually down if you look at that. Couple of reasons, obviously, is the, the adjustments that were done. They're on lines four eighty seven through four eighty nine, four ninety, the one point one, you know, they totaled about one point five million. We did build in there and we didn't have that before, on lines four eighty two and four eighty three. The first one is an estimated increase with the seven percent insurance increase and then just another expenditure increase for, you know, the, the salary increases, you know, some inflationary stuff. You know, and that, we, we've estimated a number with Bill. The bottom line, kind of after everything's in and out, twenty four looks okay. I mean, if you go into the middle there at four seventy nine and four, lines four seventy nine and four eighty, our projected revenue over expenditures is, is going to be up a little bit. One line I did miss that I want to point out, line four sixty, is the enrollment. Our estimated enrollment for next year is projected to go down and that's based upon basically two things, we just roll ahead the classes. We put in like a hundred and thirty two for the, for the kindergarten class, which was based upon the enrollment study and the graduating class is, is bigger. So we have a natural loss there and when you lose that, we lose some other formula because the funding is based upon per student. So that'll show up next year a little bit more. So kind of in a summary, real quick, twenty, twenty four probably looks okay because we, we got those extra items. If you want to flip, then I'll go back to the page before, those are the, the summary page we went over. Those are the numbers in the revenue expenditures and, you know, the fund balance will go up a, a little bit. And again, there's two things that'll really change that or have the, the thing to change that is how does the, the budget end for twenty three? And how does enroll, then in twenty four, what's the actual enrollment look like come October first when everybody's somewhat settled down from ins and outs and moving? So at that point, you, you probably gotta look at this and revise it again depending upon what, what, what those items were, what they came in at, the actuals. If you flip ahead to FY twenty five, and I'll kind of summarize FY twenty five and twenty six in the same manner. If you look at five thirty one and five thirty two, and again, the projection looks a lot better than it did three months ago because of the, the funding from the state. But if our enrollment continues to decrease and that, that really matters what's coming in on the kindergarten and we don't get an influx of students in the other grades, we're gonna drop enrollment because of the graduating classes being bigger. It's kind of the opposite effect of, you know, it's been happening for about three or four years and for those who've been on the board before that, we had smaller graduating classes and we had the larger classes coming in. You know, right now, our largest classes are nine through twelve, you know, or eight through twelve next year. And the smallest classes are the ones coming in. So depending upon how the budget ends up in twenty three and where the enrollment comes in, in, in October, November, it was probably not the last round of budget cuts. If, depending where the numbers come in, if the enrollment stays down. And it, it's probably an enrollment based thing. And if you look at the numbers there, we had talked, I mean, Bill had talked about putting in, you know, budget cuts, but we, we left them out, our budget adjustments. And if you look, the, the fund balance does drop in twenty five and in twenty six. And that's projecting a hundred and twenty five kindergartners coming in, which hopefully, the enrollment projection was low. Good news is twenty four looks good, may have to look at twenty five and twenty six. Megan, I, I, I talked a lot there and I'll, I'll open up for questions everywhere, but you know, it's, it's a lot of numbers. This was probably, and, and Bill, I know you're, you're really connected up with legislature. Our lobbyist said that this was by far the most stuff that came out in her twenty six years of working up there. You know, and, and there's, there's probably some stuff that we don't have built in there because, you know, it came out the end of May and it's, it's, you know, and there's some other things that might be good, there might be some things that are gonna sneak up and you're gonna have to fund. But hopefully, we got the, the big points in here.
I'll say, some of the new things that were added in, in the legislature don't get implemented for a year or two years or three years and so we have some time to, to plan for that because we don't even, we don't even know all the things yet.
That, I maybe just want to touch on one or two of those. The unemployment is, is, was a big, big thing that was passed, the summer unemployment. We do have a number in there in twenty four on the revenue and expenditures, I think I, I put a hundred and eighty thousand in on both sides. They did, the legislature did put a pool of money in there to fund the unemployment, the summer, I could call it the summer unemployment cost for a couple of years. And, and I guess they're hoping in a couple of years, they don't really know how many people are gonna apply. And basically, that's what they said. And the summer unemployment is different than our other unemployment when, when somebody, you know, gets, the position gets cut or whatever. That money ends up on the levy. This money, as of now, ends up coming out of the general fund and that's why they're funding it. The other big thing that's gonna be, and I think it's two thousand and twenty six, twenty seven, somewhere in there that starts, is you heard about the Family Leave Act, which is basically going to be a additional tax and it's split half and half between employer and employee. As of now, it's point, point three percent, so about a, about point three five percent to us. Based upon our current payroll, it's gonna be sixty five to seventy thousand dollars that we will have to pay out, the school will have to pay in addition. And again, I think that number is right now just an estimate. You know, I, I kind of run the numbers in the back of my head and I don't know how, you know, if, if we put in sixty five thousand or seventy thousand as a school district, employees put in sixty five, seventy thousand, that's a hundred and forty. It's a twenty week payout, I'm not sure that is going to cover if you have a, a couple of people on, on medical leave or child bear, you know, birth, I don't know that that will be enough, you know, that, that, that's just to be determined. And I, I'm not perfect to the numbers, but it just seems that it's not a, it's not a big pool. So those are the other two things to, that twenty five, twenty six that you'll need to look at.
Not a, not a big deal for tonight, but on your worksheet for your students, just check over lines twenty nine and thirty, I just happen to catch it just because it's the grade that my kids in. But it's just a number that didn't carry through, it's not like it's gonna break the whole thing, but it's just the number didn't carry through correct for the. So if you look at line twenty eight, for the preliminary, for those ninth graders.
Oh, that, that's, we add a few kids in ninth grade, they don't, that's the one year, don't, I, I didn't mention that.
But then if you watch when they go to tenth grade, you gain eleven kids.
Right, because we add the kids coming from private schools.
No, but.
Or did I mess that up? Usually in ninth, eighth to ninth grade, we.
But you're adding them from ninth to tenth. You see what I mean?
On the, on the projected for next year, or I'll, I'll.
You see what I mean? Yeah. So look at.
Yeah, I, I got it. I, I, I missed the year.
It's just.
I got one forty seven to one forty, I, I added it in tenth grade instead of ninth grade that year, so, yeah.
It's just.
Right.
And like I said, it's, I only noticed it since it's my own kid, so. It's not a big deal, but if you don't fix it, it's never gonna give.
One year it'll be off.
Yeah. It's not like the whole budget's ruined or anything like that.
That's the one other thing we do pick up. You know, a lot of the private school kids in the.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, that's one thing.
Get that whole thing to even.
If, you know, I, I guess we didn't mention this page, but, you know, that's the enrollment. You know, look at the sizes of the nine through twelve and look at the sizes of K through four.
No, I was just looking because it is very interesting because you got a couple of big classes in there and then they kind of go away and then they just kind of go away.
Yep, and the one class is really small and they, you know, you talk about, and that's the other thing, who knows how COVID's gonna affect things? You know, because the one year that's really small in there, it's the, I don't know, it's like the one twenty class or one twenty nine. That goes back, people claim that's due to the economic crisis of the year and, you know, it's where the kids that should have been born there and people put off and, you know, we, we have less kids. And those that have been around a while, if you remember, we had a tornado effect on, you know, there was less kids there and then a couple of years, eighteen years after, nineteen years after tornado and then we had a couple of really big classes. So there's some second analogy into it.
So Tim, I have to say, this year, I think we both agree that this is one of the most complicated finance, financial years for school districts between COVID phasing out and trying to tie all those expenses to all the different funds with all the different rules and then to have the legislature roll out with the largest change any of us have ever seen in our careers and then to track all that and try to, you know, bring out your crystal ball and predict some of the future and then dig into hundreds of pages of documents that we get from the government that just, I really want to give you some kudos for all the work that you've done to keep us, you know, between the, between the lines on the highway. And I know this is, this is your final board meeting, so I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank you for everything that you've done for the district. Certainly, COVID was a big one, but before that was the construction of the high school and referendums and just really keeping us on a, on solid financial ground. So thank you for everything that you've done for our schools.
We'll be back a little bit later here.
This was the big one.
This was the big one, yeah, this was, I, I agree, it's just been, you know, and hopefully, we've got most of the stuff identified, but it, you know, it is a budget, it is a moving, it's always a moving target. This year, it's a really moving target and again, it's enrollment, enrollment, enrollment.
Can I ask? So, Tim, you mentioned you thought the end of this next year, we should be all right. But twenty five and twenty six may. So when you do your projections, both for revenues and expenditures, and I know like you've said, that enrollment is the big key in this. But the fact that you mentioned that we're gonna have to watch those two years closely and maybe make adjustments as we go. In your experiences, based on the numbers that you presented today, would you think that there would have to be cuts made in those two years?
If enrollment comes in at one twenty five for the, one thirty for the kindergarten for this year. for this year and one twenty-five for next year, yes. Cause all the revenue, the revenue, if you look at the revenue close on the rollout of twenty-five, the only thing that's really gonna change our revenue is we're gonna get two percent more, which is probably two to three hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna lose that much in revenue from loss of students. So the revenue is gonna stay. You won't need to do any, any cuts if you have no increases in expenditures. And, and you know, again, how, how, how.
Yeah.
How realistic is that? I mean, that, that's, if, if you wouldn't, if the expenditures increase, that's probably what you need to look at cutting because the revenue is going to be that thirty million something. It's gonna be pretty flat. Again, depending upon enrollment and the twenty-three actual numbers. And hopefully the twenty-three expenditures are running okay from what I can tell. The revenue again is always a, it's kind of a moving target depending upon our final enrollment numbers because they, they adjust. Um, but, but yeah, if, if, if we graduate a hundred and seventy, eighty kids and we bring in a hundred and thirty, you're gonna have a lot less revenue than expenditures. If you come in, you know, for some reason we get a big, I guess the other influx, the other variable is if you can get extra students between kindergarten and twelve. You know, and that, that, and we've never ever projected any except the, the, the non-public kids coming in. You know, if we get an influx of, of students for some, you know, for some reason, or we get, you know, we did lose a number of students over the COVID period to the non-publics. If for some reason our homeschool or, or wherever other public schools, if they come back or if we get a sudden, uh, increase, you know, we've always gotten to, and we've never really put it in there, ninth grade, since a new school's been built, we have gotten an increase in students in ninth grade, which I, I don't know if anybody ever's really analyzed it real close. I guess I just always assumed it was because it's such a nice school and we got a lot of good programs and, you know, get a few transfers in from other schools. So if we can get a few of those, you know, every kid's worth seven to ten thousand bucks.
And we have school districts around us making some changes too that could, you know, push or pull students as well. And looking back at, uh, the report we looked at, I think it was December, January, where we were celebrating that more students are coming to us from Mankato than going to Mankato. So hopefully those trends will continue.
And that's one thing that's really turned in, in my time here, because we used to be negative on that. And, and I think, you know, the new school probably had a lot to do with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. We will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget as it is included in our packet signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget has been approved. Thank you, Tim. Item number five, consider a resolution to increase community education revenue due to population growth.
Yes, we have an opportunity to increase our revenues for community ed. You know, that fund that was so negative to, um, get us a few thousand dollars more. The, this particular levy is based on the general population of the school district. Where most of our other levies are on students served or, or our, our resident students. This is on, on all residents. So with the change in the census numbers, we can make a change in this and therefore increases the levy. So the twenty-twenty census figure was fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve. Reminder, that's the whole school district, not Saint Peter. Uh, and it increased to fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. So that's kind of right on trend with the other census populate, or the population data that we've seen that our overall population is increasing in this area, even though there's fewer school age students. So anyway, um, this is a resolution. And you can read it into the record and go from there.
Alright, so, uh, the resolution certifying the population estimate for the twenty-twenty-three payable twenty-twenty-four levy of independent school district, uh, number five zero eight, Saint Peter Public Schools. Whereas the independent school district number five oh eight has experienced an increase in population from the twenty-twenty census figure of fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve to the current census figure of fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six as determined by the state demographer. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number five oh eight, let the census figure of fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six be certified to the state demographer for approval of use in the twenty-twenty-three payable twenty-twenty-four revenue calculations.
I move the resolution. Is that what I do? Or make a motion and move the resolution?
Move for a resolution.
Is that what I do? Okay, that's what I'm gonna do.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion, discussion. So when you say we increase the levy, we're not increasing personal taxes of any individual. We're just increasing the number of people that we're collecting from.
True.
Yes.
Well.
No.
It would be spread amongst the same number of people, but when we set the levy, we set it at fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve, which would be X amount of dollars. And now we're saying it's fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. So it's actually about twenty-five hundred dollars more, but gets spread. I mean, so it does go up, but it's.
Theoretically, the amount each individual pays should be the same.
It goes up a lot, cause the amount goes up.
That's what the number of people paying for it.
Right. I can be paying for it anyway.
There are more people, not more property. I mean, I, you know, on the levy.
Right.
It can spread over the, there's more people, but the property is the same. So everybody's tax, you know, it's, everybody's taxes may go up two cents. I mean, it would spread over the whole thirteen. Thirty dollars. So it goes up a little bit.
I still stand to move the resolution.
And I still second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Alright, we will proceed to vote. This is a resolution, so we need to go around the table. Mr. Wilkins, go ahead.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
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 It's Martin.
Aye.
unanimously passes. Uh, the resolution, uh, resolution has been passed. Next up, consider approval of an increase in activities fees. Mr. Rorcassey.
Hello. Hello. How's it going? Excuse me, sorry. Um, so one of the things that we had talked about or had been brought to me about um, through all the budget talks was to increase the activities fees. Um, and so I met with, um, Mr. Gronseth and Mrs. Engeldinger a couple of times, coming up with some different options. Brought one option to the, um, education committee a couple of months ago, um, which um, our current fee structure, for those that don't know, is we have seventh through ninth grade as a combined group. And then tenth through twelfth grade as a group. Um, what we are, um, what I'm proposing or we're proposing is that we take um, those two and kinda split them up. So we'd have basically a middle school group and a high school group. Um, so if you're in ninth grade, you're paying the same as what, um, the high school fees would be. And then if you're middle school, you're paying those fees, um, regardless of the activity you're in, um, which is, you know, currently is forty-five dollars. And so um, the reason we kinda felt that is a lot of ninth graders are playing like a C squad schedule or on a seven through twelve program, which has a pretty much a varsity schedule. So you're going to ninety, ninety-five percent of those contests. Um, you know, and so the, the fee of only forty-five dollars obviously doesn't cover, none of it covers what we're spending, but, um, but doesn't really even drop a buck, drop it in the bucket. So what we're proposing is again, um, middle school and a high school, um, grouping and then, um, raising the fee by twenty-five dollars for each activity. So for middle school, you'd be looking at seventy dollars and that's basically across the board. And then for high school, majority are, you know, a hundred and five dollars currently, which would then re, um, bring it up to one thirty, somewhere a little bit more, such as hockey, um, football, basketball, just cause of length of season, things like that. But, um, the, the increase across the board would still be twenty-five dollars. The numbers you see that are highlighted, um, I don't know if they're highlighted on yours, but the fall total is all based on projections of what we had signed up for this twenty-two, twenty-three year. So obviously those are guesstimates, but it kinda gives an idea of what that increase would, would look like. So, um, you know, for the fall, for example, we'd be, the activities fees would be about forty-four thousand. Winter, twenty-four thousand, spring, thirty-four thousand. Then activities, which is your speech, um, what I play, um, middle school, play musical, et cetera, um, would be about twenty-seven thousand for a total of one thirty-one. Um, when our current structure, it's about eighty-two thousand that we bring in from activity fees. Um, so those are, yeah.
If you could talk about, um, students who are scholarship too.
Yep. So, um, the current format we have is, is have for a scholarship is basically if a student comes in and asks for a scholarship, they are granted one, cause obviously we want them to participate. Um, that money, um, is just covered by the school and then kind of the premier partners is a piece of that that helps to cover that cost as well. But, um, you know, we don't have a, um, due process really of, you know, a vetting process, I guess you should say. Um, you know, we try to, um, the ones that come in and encourage them to give them a free and reduced form to fill out. But that's about the extent of it, just cause there's a lot of information from that that we aren't allowed to know. So that, you know, if a student is asking for one, they are getting one. The numbers that I gave, um, do help reflect that, you know, like there would still be about that increase, cause I went off of how many paid for this past year for what we're looking at for our revenue coming in um, from this twenty-two, twenty-three year. So, um, I do have a, like, a, a list from other schools in the surrounding area. We're still pretty, um, either low or comparable to pretty much all of them. So we were very low compared to most schools in the area. Now we're still on the bottom end of kind of that, um, that bracket, but closer to the, the norm. So if we go with that option, yes.
Do you compare to schools of similar size?
Yeah, so, um, I have, um, reached out to, I've sent it to everybody in our conference and, and, you know, our Mankatos and some that were, you know, bigger, but we're in the same section or same class as them. So um, numbers from Wasika, New Ulm, TCU, Marshall, East, Jordan and Fairmont that I have compared to. Um, for most, I think the only one that we are, um, maybe a little bit more than is, um, TCU, but everybody else, maybe middle school a little bit with New Ulm, depending on the activity. But everybody else, we're about the same, if not a little bit, a little bit lower.
And, and we've heard a number of those districts are going through the same process and likely increasing the cost of their activity fees.
Right, yeah, I'm guessing.
Putting this again likely.
They reached, the superintendent group reached out to me to ask what ours were.
Yep.
And we had just based it on theirs and they're increasing theirs, so.
So we're still low.
We'll still.
Yep.
In your recollection, do you know the last time we've made a fee adjustment?
Um, well, it hasn't been in the last two years, so, um, but I don't think, talking with Mrs. Engeldinger, it's not been since she has been in this and like a principal or even a assistant principal role. So I think the last time people had the best guess was about twenty years, if not, if not before then probably. So, you know, obviously with the costs of even just one basketball now, you know, and everything else, it it's gone up considerably since the last time it was increased.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, I thought I paid forty-five dollars for Emily to swim in like two thousand nine, like honestly. So.
So do we have, um, any limits for families as far as the amounts that the family pays?
We do. Um, so this past year, um, it was basically two hundred and fifty dollars per season. Um, so total of seven fifty throughout the entire school year. Um, so this will obviously increase with that, which, you know, is a number we would still set, um, probably about a nine hundred, I think we had talked about or somewhere in there. Um, but there is a limit, yes. Yep. Um, you know, the, the kicker with that is with just how many people have registering and coming through on our systems. Families have to notify us of that, cause we have like an automatic flagger that just says, hey, you only now owe fifty dollars instead of a hundred and fifty. Um, you know, but, uh, even with families that have quite a few involved in activities, that number's still you know, pretty high to get to unless you're in, which some people are in, okay, but, yeah, yeah.
So I understand for the most part, we're adding additional twenty-five dollars to activities across the board. With, with the exception of, with a couple of other more expensive sports.
Yes.
But in this sheet I'm seeing a couple of the sports had a five dollar increase, like the baseball and softball. And likely just a typo, but I want to at least have it caught so we don't have to go back and be like, oh, shoot.
Oh, I must have just assumed they were a hundred and five, like most sports, but I think they're.
Well, cause like track and field was.
I see.
Good catch, Drew.
It's twenty more bucks.
Just bringing in more money.
Sorry, baseball families.
Yeah, so I mean, those would obviously, I'd double check what we have paid. I just was.
Yeah.
Kind of, but, yeah.
Was it just those two?
That I saw.
I think that's it. The rest were one oh five.
I'm guessing when you would have had somebody put it into the system, they probably would have caught that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause we'll have to go through and rebuild each one for the next, the next year based off the new fee and we'll increase that or change that based off of what was charged this year.
Yep.
Um, and obviously the biggest kicker would be, you know, those ninth, that ninth grade is the biggest change.
Well, I think it was more, it was always more confused. I shouldn't say confusing, but I was always like, oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Every time.
Right, yeah.
Like every time.
I mean. Yeah, it aligns with what I think a general expectation would be anyway.
Right, cause most of ninth graders are playing a high school schedule, whether it's part of a swimming, which is seven twelve or part of basketball, they're still going to, you know, the same games that varsity is until you get to the end of the year for the most part, so.
I don't.
Thank you, Shane.
You bet.
So we got that in front of us.
I would make a motion to approve the new fee structure as presented by Mr. Rorcassey.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion?
This guy always do it first, don't I? Always discuss first.
Well, you know, it's nice to do it that way.
Uh, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the increase in activities plea.
As I corrected.
Oh.
Yeah.
As corrected.
As corrected. Thank you. So.
Twenty-five dollars across the board.
Be changing, yeah, twenty-five dollar increase on each sport, but particularly the baseball and softball.
The ninth grade, which is far more than twenty-five dollars.
Correct.
True.
Right.
So I would just say as.
As correct.
As corrected, yep. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is approved. Yeah, increase in activities fees has been approved. Thank you.
We'll be sure to let the baseball and softball.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm texting Coach Multer and Heemeyer right now.
Uh, number seven, consider the continuation of a joint agreement with MVET to provide food service.
Alright, we have had an ongoing agreement with MVET to provide their food service and they would like to continue that. So this is really the same contract that we've had in the past and just extending it for another year.
So there's no increase in the fee?
No, they, they would pay whatever, the, the same that we do.
It's based on what you call.
Yep.
Okay, I move to approve the continuation of a joint agreement with MVET to provide food service.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion varies since the continuation of the joint agreement with MVET to provide food service has been approved. Motion carries, continuation of the joint agreement with MVET to provide food service has been approved.
Here comes Mr. Regner for his last dance.
Number eight, consider a resolution to approve yearly governmental lease.
Remember, we typically do this every year, it started before me. We get a lease or borrow money basically to pay for the one, it started with the one-to-one when the school went to the one-to-one program for the ninth through twelfth graders. And we also, we borrow money for that and pay it back in the four years while they're here. And then we also borrow money and set up on a five-year repayment for other electronic-type devices. I think it started when the fund balance was really low, I think that was the reason for it. And then we've continued it. We thought about discontinuing it a couple of years ago when the fund balance was up. Probably a good thing we continue to do it and once we got in this cycle because of the, the fund balance situation. Basically send out requests to the local institu- financial institutions for financing. This year, we received quotes back from First National and Hometown. First National Bank was the lower one for this year. Again, we always get pretty good service from the local banks, I always like to prop them. And both First National, Hometown and Pioneer all have a couple of leases and have helped us out over the years on those things. The rate is up a little bit from last year, anybody that follows economics, you know, they've raised the prime rate five times. So we're at in the six percents this year, we were down in the twos and threes previous years. The, the amount is also down a little bit this year, I want to point out, because, and he's not here, so I can give him credit for it. Gus Sorbo had been embarrassed otherwise, he got us about a hundred and ten or twenty thousand dollars through a COVID-type grant to pay for a lot of the one-to-one devices we bought this last year. So we would, otherwise, if not for that, we'd probably be in that three-hundred-thousand-dollar range, so. But I guess our recommendation is, is to set up the lease with First National Bank for the coming year for roughly two-hundred-four thousand dollars.
I move the resolution to approve the yearly governmental lease with First National Bank.
Second.
Have your motion in a second, need to read the resolution.
I think you can, what we say, as written. Resolution.
Motion and a second to pass the resolution as written in the board book packet and in your packet in front of you. Any discussion? All right, we will vote, it is a resolution, so we go around the table. Mr. Lopkins, go.
Aye.
Stewie?
Aye.
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 We have approved the yearly governmental lease, thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Saint Peter, Recreation and Leisure and Saint Peter Community and Family Education.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to come forward and share about some of the great work that we're doing. This memorandum of understanding is really a definition of a strong partnership that we have with the Recreation Department. It also addresses the services that each of us will provide, so that we can maximize our resources and avoid program duplication. As you know, both of our organizations are committed to eliminating barriers to participation, supporting academic achievement, providing positive recreational and social opportunities, and also encouraging leadership. And one of the ways that we do this is by providing the Recreation Department with funds for their exploration and recreation program. This program is a free program that operates in local parks throughout the summer, provides a great service to kids. We know a lot of students are anxious every week when they have the new activities coming. Last summer's attendance was one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven children. And our funds help to phrase some of the costs that that program has for staffing, activities and then supplies. The Volunteer in the Park, or the VIP program, as you probably know it, which fosters leadership skills, is another program that our funds help to support. Last summer, there were thirty-seven students who participated and three of those students continued on throughout the school year volunteering in different capacities. We also provide funds to support after-school youth enrichment programs. This helps reduce some of the participant fees for things like early release day activities, fencing, flag football, traveling volleyball, esports and babysitter training. And during the last school year, there were seven hundred and thirty-nine students who participated in those programs. It's really great to be able to work with an organization that shares the same guiding principles that we have. And this working document is really a guide that Joey and I use when we make our program decisions. And we find that it's a really valuable and helpful one for us. As you've had a chance to look at the memorandum, are there any questions that you might have? When I look at the level of programming that we get for the dollars that we give, it's really a bargain. If I had to duplicate those programs all on my own, it would cost more. But this partnership is a really solid one and it provides great things for our community.
That's what I was gonna ask, if there's ever a hope and a dream that Community Ed would want to do some of those things, but.
Well, again, we really try not to duplicate the things that are already happening, so it's really nice when you find a partner and you can share those costs and provide that level of programming.
And I think, side note, it's been the same for a few years now, the cost, so.
And the offerings are absolutely stunning compared to area schools and so on, it's just great that kids in Saint Peter can do, yeah.
I think, you know, we've had some conversation and in, in other models that I've worked with, the city pays Community Ed, or grants Community, Community Ed. But then it, we're both spending the same amount, it's just who's paying who to do it. So if, if we weren't paying them, we'd be putting in at least this to do the same and the city giving us some money. This way, they're, they're putting in the same, but we're giving them the dollars, so.
Who's doing the work or.
Right, so, it, either way it works.
I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Saint Peter Rec and Leisure and Saint Peter Community and Family Education.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We will proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, we've approved the memorandum of understanding between the City of Saint Peter Rec, Recreation and Leisure and Saint Peter Community and Family Education. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you. Mr. Rorcasie gets to come back down.
Number ten, consider approval of a swimming cooperative with Niclet Public Schools.
So in Branyui has just the standard high school league forum to create a co-op. About, I don't know, last fall, early winter, Niclet had reached out about, they had some, some students that are interested in swimming, and they're, they're actually a student that's homeschooled but lives in the Niclet district. And so they, but they're interested in having maybe some more students of theirs that have shown interest in swimming, just never, they don't have a team, obviously. So they reached out about joining a co-op, kind of talking through it with them and talking through it with Mr. Gronseth as well and just what that looks like for us. And our numbers for swimming are projected to be around twenty-five, but it's been anywhere from that to fifty or sixty students at a time. And so it's obviously, we have room for that to still be successful and still let everybody have their, their chance. And so this is just basically a chance to allow students to have an opportunity to participate in a sport that they wanted to, that they don't before. And it doesn't have an impact on, you know, coming in and taking spots away from us, with swimming being kind of a timed event. And there's a ton of junior high and JV heats at each, each meet that we go to, so it doesn't really take anything from our students. Just adds more, more students and give them the opportunity as well. So the format you see there is just, we go through it, since we would be the host school, we're, you know, we would still be Saint Peter Saints. We wouldn't do like the Minnesota River Bulldogs kind of thing, since we're, you know, be a much more majority of our students. They would just be in charge of getting their students over here in time for practice and buses and et cetera. And then, you know, everything else on, on our end, as far as events and times and busing and coaching, all stays the same. So it's really no impact on our current situation for the, for that swimming team, so. You know, with, with Niclet, you know, that number could be anywhere from one or two to a few, obviously it's not gonna go up a ton, just with that school and what they offer in the fall. But, you know, they don't have, they don't know what they're looking like, in ten years, we're gonna have six kids that want to swim or ten, but, you know, they know they have a couple right now, so.
So these were our numbers last year, or this two-eight-three-six-seven-five? In section four, those were our numbers?
Correct, involved in swimming.
So after we approve it, this goes to Niclet?
Yep.
The Niclet School Board, and then they fill in their information, they approve it, and then it goes to the High School League. And then they have to approve the partnership.
Yep, and then we have to get approval from our region and all that stuff that, kind of behind the scenes, that we just send a bunch of emails around and go from there. So yeah, those are our current numbers. Obviously talking and trying to find ways to increase those numbers within Saint Peter. Well, but it's, you know, just if we can get more involved, that always helps get the word out to increase those numbers overall as well.
I will say that these collaborative partnerships that we have with other districts, when kids participate in them and they get to know their teammates and then they hear about the school and pretty soon they're open enrolling to the schools, it's just a, it's a good thing.
And the co-op in general, I mean, that's kind of, you know, a soft spot for me, being the hockey coach for a while, like that's a pretty cool deal to be able to like, you know, you get to know just a whole different kind of student body that way, by being in those kind of events with people from different schools. So it's kind of a cool ordeal when it doesn't have a huge impact on how things we have currently are, are going.
And yeah, for Niclet, I mean, their option for these girls is gonna be volleyball or nothing, you know?
I'm guessing they co-op across country with maybe MBL or something, but I'm not sure if they have.
Well, for me, it was volleyball or nothing, so.
Not, not six or five or six like we have in Saint Peter.
Sports in Saint Peter, which is super cool, but that's nice.
I assume this was your interest, right? Someone must be interested in swimming.
Yes.
And so there, yep. But who knows, year by year, it could be five, it could be zero.
Right.
But just for process purposes, this co-op exists until we mutually dissolve it.
Correct, or one can act to dissolve it, but until, so we wouldn't do this every year. So even if next year, all of a sudden, they don't have any swimmers, like a couple that wanted to try it, didn't like it, and they say, I'm going back to volleyball or whatever, this doesn't have to come up again next time they have somebody, you know, so. Same thing kind of like with our hockey, there'll be years where Cleveland doesn't have any hockey players, but then they're still part of the co-op. So it doesn't change that way unless we're like, getting to that point where now we have too many and now we're like, you know, it could be where we're, are we taking two buses adding coaching? And then that's a kind of a financial discussion, then, you know, you dissolve it, but until then, it's there.
Yeah, I was wondering what happens in, unlikely, but if Cleveland suddenly has thirty to fifty interests, interested athletes and Saint Peter has none, or something like that, or it's, you know, really flipped. I mean, do we just address it at that time?
Yeah, so when we, once we get approval, we work with them to kind of create what that co-op agreement would look like. You know, is it similar to what we have with hockey, where you kind of have, here's how much it costs and you pay your percentage based on how many students participated in that year? You know, so that's most likely the easiest way to go, because then however that ends up, it's pretty, you know, easily shared. If it gets to that point, you know, where it's like a complete flip, you know, I would hope we never get there, but then it's all of a sudden, it's, you know, that's a much bigger discussion, I guess.
Right.
But, but I know what you mean, like it's just, yeah, it's kind of have that in set in a way that, you know, whoever has the most is still, you know, on the hook for how that looks. So we're not, you know, they're bringing in twenty and we have ten and we're still paying for everything, kind of thing, you know, so.
And we're gonna be, they'll be Saints.
Yes.
That would be a discussion item if it was like, there are no Saints here.
Right.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, yeah.
If we did this, do you think that this might open up interest from some other districts? Because there aren't a lot of swimming teams.
There, I mean, around here, like La Sure doesn't have it, TCU has it, you know, Mankato's obviously, and so it could. You know, there's always the kicker with it is like the, you know, the kids and like the, even the parents might want to do it, but the, the district also has to be up for paying for it and figure out how that student's gonna get there and, you know, they're now claiming it as a high school league sport for them. So there's, you know, more than just saying, hey, we, we're into kind of, but, you know, potentially could. You know, there's, Cleveland's always, you know, just as close, if not closer, and so, you know, there's always an option there, I guess. But nobody else has, has talked about it or reached out, and I believe they maybe have once or twice, you know, in the years past, just kind of gauged interest, and so.
I, I move to approve the swimming cooperative with Niclet Public Schools.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes, approve the swimming cooperative with Niclet Public Schools. Item eleven, consider approval of authorizing Megan Gracia to replace Tim Regner as a signer on District 508 accounts.
Yes, last month, we added B in case there was some need in transition. And in the meantime, we have hired Megan Gracia as the business manager. And it became official tonight, because you just accepted that, like, in the consent agenda. And so we've been working with the bank to prepare to remove Tim's name from the, as a signer at Tim's request and adding Megan.
He wrote a couple big checks to himself.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, what am I approving, the authorizing Megan to replace Tim as a signer on all District 508 accounts.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Congrats now, Megan.
Congrats on signing things.
Locked in.
Sign wisely. Item twelve, consider second reading of revisions to the policy manual.
Yes, we brought these to you last month as a first reading, when we could have brought them as a single reading. But because we brought them as a first reading there before you as a second reading, and there aren't any changes that we're putting into those. Does that make sense?
And I would move to approve the second reading of the following revisions, or the listed revisions to the policy manual.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Those policies are adopted.
The next item are a single reading due to material changes. So we looked through these, there were no significant changes on Policy 404. We didn't have the, the form attached when the policy had said it should be, so we've attached that form. And then one notation was stricken in 405, otherwise there were no changes and no material changes in any of the policy language.
And I would move to accept the, the single reading, or to approve these policies on a single reading, because there were no, no material changes, except for the two noted.
Second. Motion and a second, any other questions?
The only thing I would say is the form isn't listed in here.
Yeah.
For 404, so we'll still have to add the form.
With the addition of the form.
Yeah, it exists, but it needs to be in here.
In there, okay.
So we have to pull out 404 for July then, or?
No, I think we can just.
The form exists. The form exists. The form exists, let's not put it off.
It's just not in the package.
That'd be great.
Like, I don't know.
Just bring it back.
One more, ten. It's like the encore, you know?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
I know how this works.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Sorry, four oh four, I tried.
Uh, the final action item, consider approval to amend a previously passed resolution of non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts.
Yes, it's a, a happy note to end on. Um, well, we've, we've had some more people either retire or resign, move on, accept different positions, and so some of the staff members that were included in the resolution of non-renewal of non-tenured teachers can be brought back, and rather than have, uh, an end and a beginning in their files, if we go back and amend the resolution, it's like we didn't take that step and they have an uninterrupted time of employment, it's just cleaner to go back and amend the resolution. So Kent Bass, Stephanie Evans, and Ethan Sindelir have all accepted positions in the district, and so you'll just be seeing them as a transfer, um, member, transferring into a new position, so. Kent Bass is actually in the position that he was being bumped out of.
Nice.
Because the person who is bumping him had moved on to another district. So he's actually taking back his same position, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't see a memo
Yeah.
for that, 'cause he's discontinuing. Stephanie Evans will still be at the middle school, but she will be teaching health instead of math, and Ethan Sindelir is taking a first grade position at South, and you saw a memo on that in the consent agenda today.
Well, math and health are kinda the same, so that works.
Right?
So we
Go ahead.
So we need a motion to approve the amendment.
Yes, I will move to, I will move to amend the previously passed resolution regarding the non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts to fit what is attached in our board.
I'll suck at whatever Tim just said.
We have a motion in a second to amend the previously passed resolution. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Are you kidding? I, um, like, the, the reductions were not pleasant and weren't a good time for us, but I am pleased that we have a little bit of good news for some of the, those who are most affected. I mean, it's not a clean sweep for everyone, but it, it's some little good news, so. I'm happy about it.
So do you want me to say discussion or not say discussion next time? Cause you scolded me for saying it before. We just say it.
You know, you do have discussion, but then when you say discussion, we usually do have discussion again, so I think it's important to say it that way.
Yeah, I disagree.
I'm just following Robert.
Just kidding. I agree with you.
So we have a motion in a second.
You said you looked this up in your Roberts rules?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna go. We are.
So my only question was, because it was a resolution, can you make a motion to change the resolution?
That, that's, yeah, that's what I had to look up, and you, it's a motion to amend a previously passed
Resolution.
Resolution, and it is a simple majority of the outcome, so.
So that's why you said it like you did.
But we're missing one person.
That kinda seems like a dicey rule.
Oh, boy.
You know what I mean?
What?
That you could just go amend a previously
Past resolution.
Yeah.
So it, it is more complicated, because if it was passed unanimously, so any of you could bring it up, if it were someone who were on the losing side of the vote, then only a person in the prevailing, or on the prevailing side can bring it back.
Couldn't do it, no.
But because it was unanimous, any of you can bring it back.
Okay, that, that seems like an appropriate bumper.
And if it wasn't a unanimous, then everybody has to be present
Yeah.
to re-vote.
Ooh, and tougher.
Yeah.
But the, but we do not need to do a roll call?
Right. No.
Because it's a, yeah.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
A positive second.
I'm glad I did my homework, I just say it.
A motion in a second. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor of amending a previously passed resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Information items. First up, school board election filing dates.
It is that time of year again that we have to start watching our, our legal requirements for providing notification to the public. We are at that time that we need to make notification, that the, uh, school board will have four seats included on the ballot in November. The filing date uh, begins on August fourth at eight AM and runs through August eighteenth at five PM in the district office, and the filing fee is two dollars, um, for these seats. And so legal notice will be provided in the Herald, and it will be posted twice as required before the filing date opens.
But we don't have to take any action.
Nope, that's just informational and, um, you know, to let you know, but also to let the public know. Two, this serves as one of our legal requirements of notifying the public that it is available. I did notice right before the meeting that it, the, um, the notification was not included in Word Book, but I think it's in there now.
Thank you.
That's it.
No other informational items. We have reports from a small group, no?
Do I get to come up?
Yeah.
There's no one else here.
You should have heard the admin meeting today, they're like, hey, Jenna, you got spotlight.
That's all right, I missed the last meeting and I have to miss the July meeting, so, thought I better stay. So, um, right now, we are in, we're actually wrapping up high school credit recovery already. We just have one more week next week, so we had two sessions, we had a one-week, very condensed session, we had thirty students enrolled. Um, we offered just world history and US history during that time, and then the last couple of weeks, we've had English nine, English ten, English eleven, physics, chemistry, biology. Mr. Kennedy is handling all of the math, and then we have Ms. Baki doing geography, so I just wanna really recognize their efforts taking their time in the summer to put together curriculum, they're really individualizing it for each student. Our goal in credit recovery is not to make kids do every single thing again, but to go back and make sure they have all of their gaps met, so that they can progress and be successful as they move forward, so they are individualizing learning for everybody and doing a really nice job, so just a shout out to those teachers, and then, like I said, we had thirty session one, and we have seventy students session two, and, um, seventy-five percent, or three-quarters or so, are taking two classes, so these kids are working really hard at the high school and they're doing a really nice job, so congrats to them for sticking it out and, and working hard. Rock Bend wrapped up a pretty good year, um, many of our seniors went across the stage and received their diploma, and we are just about full at Rock Bend already for next year, we only have four seats open, and that is unusual to be sitting like that in June. Um, kids are typically more last minute with Rock Bend applications, so I'll be interested to see what happens as we head into August. Uh, typically, we get new enrollees to the district that are behind credits, um, and so hopefully we'll have some space for them, otherwise we'll get our waitlist going again. Um, Ashua Learning Academy at the Hoffman Learning Center is also doing summer school, they've also got one week left, and, um, numbers are increasing out there, we are, I think at twenty-five right, not twenty-four right now, so numbers are going up. Um, they've opened another unit for clients, and so we should, we should see those numbers continue to rise. So that's what's happening right now, I know the other principals would tell you all the great things that are happening, as they're preparing to start summer school next week, so we'll be wrapping up just as they begin. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Scorp.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna mention, summer school starts on Monday for our elementary students, and so we have lots of students coming in, I know at, in the beginning, it was a little slow having people sign up, and now we're to the point where like, okay, we probably need to get some more staff in here, because we have so many students coming in and participating in summer school, which is wonderful. Jenna mentioned that Rock Bend is almost full already for next fall, it just speaks to the ongoing conversation that we've had, like, we really need to find, uh, a suitable space, I have had some conversations about some possibilities, and will continue to explore those possibilities until we find a suitable space for them to, to be in. Um, I wanted to mention Tim Regner again, I know that he, he, uh, quietly exited out the door so he would avoid this. So that's why I got it while he was, uh, doing the budget, but really, uh, again, wanna commend him for ten years with the district and all of the support that he's provided. I can tell you, as, as a superintendent, um, transitioning into a district, the business manager is one of those key people who is really sharing a lot of that information and makes it possible for uh, an incoming soup to even function, so I really have appreciated all the time that we've spent together over the past three years. Uh, I look forward to spending just as much time with Megan in the next three, and, um, anyway, we are, we are happy to, uh, be celebrating him tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, a week from today, uh, taking him out to lunch and, uh, just sharing our appreciation as an admin team for his years of service, so. Um, with that, I, I will say, we have presented you with a lot of information tonight, and there has been a lot of time and effort put in by the entire admin team on the number of items that are before you, and I can tell you that next month holds just as many, so. Our work is not done for the summer, for sure. That's, we're all closed.
I don't have anything, thanks.
Uh, a reminder to the board that we are, our annual, uh, evaluation of Superintendent Gronseth is, we are in the midst of it. Evaluations are coming back to me by next Thursday, a week from today, and then I'll compile those, and then we will discuss at a future board meeting, um, to go over the evaluation. So if you have any questions, board members, please let me know, or concerns with the form or anything. Mr. Cal?
My only question was, what's the, uh, wasn't there a special meeting on the seventeenth of July at five? Is down here, but it was
It's a study session.
Study session. Oh, a study.
Study sessions first, yeah.
My mistake.
Nope, that's okay.
That's it.
Mr. Dixon?
None for me.
Ms. Martin?
None for me.
All right. We have some upcoming meetings, policy committees on next Wednesday at four in the district office, education committee, the Tuesday, July eleventh at one PM, business committee, Wednesday, July twelfth at four PM, and then, uh, as Mr. Cal pointed out, Monday, July seventeenth, we have the marathon study session at five PM in the Traverse DeSous Room, followed by our regular board meeting at six thirty PM right here in the governor's room.
Just a note, we will provide you with a light dinner between your meetings that day, if you so wish us to do.
Did I miss any meetings? Come on. We entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this fabulous meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
So it's a fabulous?
Have we heard any agreement?